Vice Mayor Peters.
Here.
Councilman Gray.
Here.
Councilwoman Greg.
Here.
Councilwoman Knapple. Councilman Petty.
Here.
Councilman Warren.
Here.
City Attorney Greppin.
Here.
First item on the agenda is considered for approval of minutes of the meeting on January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. There's no bills currently over ten thousand dollars. We had no emails for citizens' concerns. The next one is my report. The first thing on there, we're doing a five-year Parks and Recreation Plan in order to get a lot of these grants. And we're pretty far ahead of that, but our Parks and Rec Committee is going to meet Monday night and start coming up with some ideas from the citizens, what they want to see put in our parks. Right now, we've got the plans for the bathrooms that are going down the dog park, and they're going to give me the pavilion and the stage plans. And we're going to do the pickleball courts ourself, because it's just got to basically pour the concrete and stripe it and put the nets up. That should be up, once FEMA approves everything, it should be pretty quick. And we're going to put in two instead of one. Because I've had a lot of citizens tell me that they got a league that has quite a few players in it already, so we're going to do that. On our water and sewer lines, our SRF loans, we are on the ranking priority list. And we're ready to go our side as we've done all the paperwork, it's ready. The problem is, the federal government has not funded the state, so there's no money to give out. So we have to wait till the federal government passes their budget to pass it down to come to us. So we're in a holding pattern on that. Starting tomorrow, you'll see the, there'll be banners along College Avenue and Alice Street that the city got for the school. Has all their sports teams on there and everything, and they're going to be up all year round, they're all-weather. We had a, I went to the county steering committee meeting Monday night. They approved unanimously for, to put that land in front of the Turner Building up for survey, so that way we can start the process, hopefully it'll go through.
Would that be a possibility before we put the city on?
Yes. That's, that's what that, that was, what that was for. But the, it's, the motions have been put in place. I want to do something that, that I think needs to be done. I want to give Attorney Greppin the credit he deserves. He, he bends over backwards to help us. There's never been a time where if we've asked him to do something, he gets it done. And he, he is a very good attorney, and I'm glad to have him. And I mean that.
I agree.
Very nice, thank you.
And now we're going to talk about the elephant in the room, the pool. Pool's leaking water again. It's leaking fourteen hundred gallons a day. There was some information that was given to me about some stuff that was recommended to do the last time we were there due to the amount of water that's under the pool. That didn't get accomplished for whatever reasons, I don't know. So we've gotten in contact with that company, and we may have a reasonable fix, but they haven't given us price yet. We'll have to put a sump pump under the pool and then do a spray liner in there to fix the cracks and stuff that are in the pool. No idea what it's going to cost, but once we get that, we'll come back. Just wanted you all to be aware of that, okay? As of right now, the city has helped our constituents with five thousand eleven dollars and fifty-six cents in water bill help. So they're using it, it's helping. And that's all I got.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
On the pool situation, do we have it documented where it was brought to the attention of the government that it?
I, I have been, I have not seen any documentation on that. I was just told that someone was in that conversation, that's why I didn't, I'm at.
I would love to see it and see.
Well, yeah, I mean.
I don't believe, because you were on city council during that time, I don't believe we had.
We weren't told about it.
No.
That's what I'm saying, but it's, we're, we're, we are where we are. Okay? There's not a lot we can do about that. All right, next one is committee reports. First one's going to be Scott with his finance report.
If you catch your report, I wanted to point out a couple of things, actually about four things. First is whenever the council meeting happens on the first, and I don't get the bank statements till midnight, it makes it a long day. But in any case, paragraph two, it says key financial metrics as of December thirty-one, that should be January, okay? So we get that done. My goal is to always give you information for you to make intelligent decisions, so I want to do that. So I want to go over those metrics with you, just so you grasp. And the general fund, and some, we have some new council members, Ms. Greg is a new council member. Just remember, we have two major funds. The general fund is funded by tax revenues, sales tax, and those kind of things. And then you have the Water Sewer Fund, which is based on water and sewer rates, okay? They do not intermix, okay? They are standalone and separate. But like the general fund, we have five million three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in the general fund, okay? So we are very solvent when it comes to the general fund. Another major fund is the Street Aid Fund, and that is funded by gas tax revenues that come each month. And so that will be available for us when we do the streets after we put in new water lines and sewer lines. That's available in addition to whatever we need out of the general fund, okay? The Water Sewer Fund, okay, we have two million two hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars in there, okay? So we are steady, is the word that I've used as the computed metric there. Last month, we were improving, now we're steady, because I've got two months that have been within a thousand dollars of the operational cash inflows and outflows. So we're, we're okay there right now. I give you the debt, the total Water Sewer Fund revolving debt, one million seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. That goes down about ten thousand dollars a month with us just making the basic payments, okay? So whenever we get ready for the water and sewer SRF loans, we have to always look at that figure plus what we're going to borrow. So I reiterate that the most we're going to be able to borrow and be able to service will wind up being about five million dollars, okay? But depending upon how much match we get from the state, that, that'll tells us how much projects we can do, okay? The next item that I have there in paragraph two A is the annualized Water Sewer Fund operating profit and loss, okay? Because of the rate increase, we're no longer in the red, okay? We're in the green. But just remember, our plan is, once we do these water and sewer lines, we're going to be picking up depreciation expense in a big way. So an annualized simply means you compute, if you were to, if you had twelve months worth, this is what it would look like, okay? So you can kind of do some mathematics there to make it annualized as if it were a year, okay? So general fund, we are very solid. Hundred and eighteen to one means we can pay off our current debt a hundred and eighteen times if we have to, okay? So we're very solid. Water Sewer Fund, fourteen to one, it's steady, okay? You see what our goal is, and we're, we're ahead of it, but we're better than we were, it was in the red. The Water and Sewer Fund debt service ratio, four point two to one, it's steady. As we pick up debt, that's going to go down, but we have to manage that and kind of watch it, okay? Whenever I'm given a report, if you have a question, my goal is to make sure you got information you can use. So I would ask, just stop and ask the question if you've got anything. And I know you can't look over this whole report the time you're sitting here, but if you take it home and study it, if you find things, just get ahold of me and I'll do my best to help you with that. Item number three is the twenty-four to twenty-five budgeting schedule. In the month of February, I'll be working with the mayor, department heads, and we'll be developing the first draft of the projected budgets for each one of the funds. March seventh, that'll be whatever the mayor decides, but at least five o'clock day, and we'll present line by line.
Can I say something?
Sure.
The reason I did that, that's on a same days of council meeting, that way we don't have to prepare to come four or five different times and different days of the week. It'd be the same day as the council meeting, but we just do it before. That way you're not being inconvenienced by coming on different days.
And I'll do my best to have you something in your hands before you come to that meeting, so you have intelligent conversation about the budget. April fourth, we'll present after the council has provided their leadership guidance. We'll incorporate that into the second draft and bring it back on April fourth. Whatever discussion ensues from there, we'll try to finish it up. Have the first reading on May second, and if all goes well, the second reading on June sixth, and we'll submit it to the comptroller on a timely basis. So that's kind of the plan, and we're always flexible based on what we need to do from there. The fourth item that I wanted to speak to you about is, I know there's been some conversation, you're fixing to have some conversation about council compensation. And once again, my goal is to give you information to make good decisions. In our, if you'll turn to page four in your report. Down under expenditures, personal services expenditures, you will note that last spring, last winter-spring, we budgeted three thousand six hundred dollars total compensation for the council. That's fifty dollars a meeting. That was approved by the council at that time, that was codified in our budget that we submitted to the state, okay? So it passed, I don't remember what the numbers were, but it, that budget passed, okay? Thirty-six hundred dollars is less than point zero 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 five percent of our total budget, okay? So it's not material to the whole thing mathematically and financially, okay? But that's a thing to use. Another question that has come up was, why did we mail certified letters to the council to deliver that? It wasn't for the check, okay? Wasn't even for the W nine, which we ask you to complete. It was so that you had that letter explaining what your options were related to law. This is based on our charter, which normally it will take a year to develop conversations and get it to the Tennessee Legislature and then on to the governor. And that's a year process, okay, to change the charter, okay? So that can all happen, but I would recommend if we're going to work on changing the charter, there's other things in the charter that might need to be addressed. So I took the leeway to contact a few municipalities. Spoke with a councilman from Hendersonville. Hendersonville's a big, big city, it's not as quaint and familial as our community. But their council, their aldermen receive a thousand dollars a month, okay? Well, that's reasonable. And then I contacted a colleague I had in Sparta, and their aldermen receive a hundred dollars per month. So whatever you're receiving here, it might pay for your gas bill, okay? But it is a standard and normal thing for municipalities to compensate their aldermen, okay? But having said that, whenever you discuss this, just remember you are leaders of this community. And anything you say or respond to in social media impacts employees and all of us. So I would just humbly ask, let's make sure we have our facts together before we begin to, to speak to things. None of the council compensation comes out of Water Sewer Fund. It's totally separate issues. What you do, I will execute whatever you, you elect to do. You do have the option, okay, to enact and put into place that we're looking to change the charter, but that's going to take some time. But you also have the option, you can set that fifty dollars to whatever you want it to be. But from my perspective, whatever you do with that check, at the end of the year, you're going to get a ten ninety-nine reporting income, okay? And from my perspective, if you choose to just tear up that check, okay? I've got outstanding checks that are going to be on our bank reconciliation for a while, okay? But it's still going to be income to you, because we issued the check. I can't change that, that's federal law. Best we can, we're going to try to do the right thing. But you can change that compensation to be whatever you desire it to be. But I just wanted to make sure everybody understood. That was another thing I put in the letter, and I wanted you guys to understand. I understand, some people may want to endorse their check and turn it back into the town as a charitable contribution. If you do that, we will process it as such, and at the end of the year, you'll get a charitable contribution along with your ten ninety-nine, okay? So that's an individual's decision with that. And I wanted you to have information to make good decisions with and.
Scott, can I add something to that?
Yes, sir.
Another thing is, is we, we all gave emails and tablets to everyone, and we email all this stuff out, but a lot of times, y'all can't get into them and stuff. And we wanted you to have that before this meeting, so if you decided you wanted to do something, and all the way we knew you got it is to be signed for it. That was another reason why we did it. But if we, when we send stuff, when we return receipt requested on our emails, I'll, we'll get them on the day of the meeting that you read it. So we wanted to make sure you had it, if you had any questions, wanted to put something on the agenda, you had it. That was another reason for the certified mail.
Whatever you decide, I will execute to the best of my ability.
Steve Keyes got a report for the sewer wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I, I email everybody, I hope you got it, but every year, we have to have continued education credits for wastewater water distribution question. So we hooked up the PAUD, and we go to one, got together. Usually we go to the expo eleven, it's a hundred and twenty dollars a person every year. We're like, can we start having some free classes, don't cost anything? So February fifteenth, on Wednesday, at the Warrantful Center, we're going to have eight-hour course, it's good for six hours continued education. We got a hold of the comptroller, and they agreed that the utility boards, anybody needing continued education can come to that. So that was a big thing. It's going to have funding, resources, cybersecurity basics, and emergency, emergency contaminants. But you're all welcome, and if you need some credits, it'd be the way to get it. If you think you're coming, maybe by next Friday, if you can give me that email, we're trying to get a head count, because they're only provide lunch every that day also. And this is something we hope we can start doing on a regular basis and, and how to help everybody stay up on the EPA regulations, keep your hours up, and it don't cost anything. So just want to throw that out there, if y'all, if y'all need us, just shoot us an email on it.
Thank you.
How many hours are we required to?
Twelve.
Every when?
I believe it's the, the initial twelve hours, I haven't seen anything on continuous.
I had, I had the original thing.
Yeah, the twelve hours. If you, you're not required after you get your original twelve hours to do anymore, but there's things out there. They used to have that academy where you go and stay for like three days, they'd get it all done, now it's all online. But he's, we're starting to put the classes, some people like it better in person than do online, so.
Just let me know if I need to get to a class.
Well, you'll be the one notified before I am, because, you know what I mean?
I hear you.
Okay.
Between pharmacy and real estate, I'm eating up with continued education.
All right, there's no more department reports, we're going to go on to the first item, unfinished business. As y'all can see, it says veto the crosswalks motion that y'all passed last month. The reason that I vetoed this, this process was done over a long period of time, we followed every step, we mailed every letter, we did everything we had to do by law to do this. Everybody had an option to come in and speak their mind about what was going on, but that wasn't the main reason. The main reason was, is I waited till people started paying their water bills, and I asked them. And the overwhelming number said, why are we spending more money on a brand-new road? There's no reason, it's not hurting anything. So I'm going to veto this, we're not, we're not going to spend any engineering fees, we're not going to spend any more money on this. Now you have the right to try and override the veto with a two-thirds vote, that's y'all's right. If you do it, we'll move forward.
I make the motion that we override it.
Second.
Roll call vote, or any discussion?
Councilman Gray?
No.
Councilwoman Greg?
No, uh, I don't want to, I don't want.
A no vote means you don't agree with the override. A yes vote means you agree with the motion.
No.
Okay, Councilwoman Knapple is absent. Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Councilman Warren?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Peters?
No.
Motion fails. Next item on the agenda is council compensation. Councilman Peter, or Vice Mayor Peters.
Yes, so I've got two motions, I'll make.
Can, can I say something? Let's do them individually and not make a compound motion?
That's what I'm planning on.
Because we have to vote, I can't just take bits and pieces, okay?
Yeah, I understand. First motion would be, I think that there was, well, I'll say this, first motion is to begin the process of changing the charter to reflect, I believe the, the wordage right now is shall, and rather have can in its place. That way, future down the line, if somebody wants to, that's fine, but as of right now, that's, it would be.
Can I say something? Why don't we make the motion to do a workshop on the entire charter? Because it has to take the same process, whether you change one word or you change the whole thing. We can't just type in one word and say we're good, we have, it has to go to the legislature and everything. So there's a lot of things we probably should change in there. Why don't we set up a workshop where we can all discuss the charter and create the changes together?
I don't see a problem with it.
I don't either. Well, it's, it's, it's Vice Mayor, Mayor Peters' motion.
So I'll rescind that motion then, and I'll, the first motion that I'm making is to have a workshop to look at the wording that would be changed if we vote to do that.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Second motion, and the, the reason, I should have done that during discussion, I'm sure, but I talked to a lot of people over the last few weeks, and both in person and social media. And I talked to, out of all of those people, I can't give you a number, it's, it's a high number, I talked to a lot of people. Three people agreed that we should be paid. One of those three people live in the city. So I, again, I made my case last month, I don't think we should, I don't think we should take taxpayer money and put it in our pockets. So that, I would like to see that changed. Until that is changed, my motion would be, because as, from my understanding, the charter says shall be paid, doesn't have a number, is that right?
That's right, that's right.
Yes, you, you've said it whatever.
So my motion would be to change the council compensation to one penny per meeting. I appreciate a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's a lot of waste of paper.
Let's, this will be a roll call vote, because it deals with money.
Councilman Gray?
No.
Councilwoman Greg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knapple absent. Councilman Petty?
No.
Councilman Warren?
Yes.
And Councilman Peters?
Yes.
So the motion carries, so the compensation for the council members will be dropped down to one penny.
Would that be effective tonight, or that will start next month?
We'll have to start it next month. Unless Scott says otherwise.
I'd be for. You agree with Ryan?
I'm good with going with tonight, so any reason why we can't start it now?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question? Scott, how are we going to work that out as far as checks go? That's kind of.
I'm the check for a penny.
Okay, just wanted, just make sure we, we can do that.
And how much does that cost? More than a pound for a penny.
All right, now we're on the new business. New business, first reading of the budget amendment BA zero-two-zero-one-two-zero-two-four-dash-one, reestablishing the street department position. That's the position y'all voted on to fund last month. Take a motion?
We don't have a budget amendment, we don't need one. Told Danielle that, but she just got the flu and didn't have time to change it.
So we. Oh, you may. Just go by the agenda.
I know. We don't need a budget ordinance change, because all we're doing, you have that sheet of paper I gave to you.
This one?
Yeah, I'm there. And you said sixty-five thousand is what we said last time, but the reality of it is, we're only talking about five months of this fiscal year. We're still in the general fund, and we're still in the same department, so all we have to do is notify the council, which this is the notification, that we're going to move monies from the funding for Carmack Street, because we're not going to get to the paving of that this fiscal year. And we'll simply allocate the twenty-one thousand it is for the rest of the five months. So there's no new money here, it's just a reallocation on a line item within the same department, within the same fund, which is the general fund. So no decisions to be made, other than unless somebody has another objection or whatever, no votes.
I object to have been on the agenda.
Sir?
I said I object to it being on the agenda, making me.
Next, you know, Mayor.
The next item on the new business is new hire for the street department. We've, the street department would like to hire Matthew Bush, very good in concrete, knows asphalt, runs all the equipment, great employee. So I'll take a motion at this time.
Motion to hire?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all. Now, the next one's going to be the recognition of our new CMFOs, and I believe that Scott wants to handle that, or do you want me to handle that?
You can have it there.
Well, I, I would like to say that we have two probably of the best people that we could have in our office that took a whole year to get this class taken. They work hard, they learn, they're always there for y'all. I mean, if you ever call here and you need something, if you ask one of these young ladies, they will do it. And I am very proud to say that they worked for us, and they did a wonderful job, didn't complain about having to go to school, they did it. They did an excellent job, and I want to give them a hand and, and give them the recognition they deserve. Okay, that's the last item, guys. What would you like to do, sir?
I want to say, I'd like to say something about the, something we done the other day, last week, though.
We have to ask for a motion to.
Motion to.
Add it to the agenda.
Add it to the agenda, I thought I was.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, well, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I've had a lot of people complaining about this money we spend down here on this ball park down here, all this fence, spending twenty-five-plus thousand dollars to do a fence. Has anybody got hurt down there over the years that's been there, run out the street, got hurt?
You're talking about Spring Street?
Yeah.
All the basketball. Okay.
I mean, that's a whole other money to spend, we could spend somewhere else, um, walk-in track, put the bathrooms in, lights in, or something. Just don't feel like it's.
Not aware of anybody getting hurt, um, what do you know anything about that?
More just beautification, making it more like a basketball court, I guess.
Go ahead, Councilman Petty.
Well, when I grew up, we didn't have fences around where we played basketball. And I kind of understand, I understand your thoughts, but I also understand that's a lot of money when, if the ball goes out in the yard, you go get it. That's just a little bit more exercise, actually. So I, no pun intended, I'm kind of on the fence on this one.
That's a whole lot of money, put a fence, I'm sorry, that's just unreal. We might put some bathrooms out the other one. Part of that.
I mean, it'd go along, I mean, I'd say that would probably pay for the pickleball court, to be honest with you, but I don't, I mean, I, I don't get a say, guys, so. Y'all got to come up with the, either a motion to not do it, a motion to do it, whatever y'all want to do, you have to tell them.
Where are we at right now with, right now, we're supposed to be getting it done, like it's a, we voted on it.
Well, we, we said we were going to do it till spring, because.
But it was approved to be.
Yes, it's approved.
It was approved.
I thought we was up doing, that we see if you can find somebody to do it for this amount of money, I didn't know we was doing it.
No, we, we voted unanimously to move forward with it.
So I've had a lot of people complaining about putting that kind of money for this.
Me too.
Like I say, I didn't, I thought we were voting, I was wrong. I'm new to this, I thought we were voting to see if you could get somebody to do it, I didn't know we were.
We did do it, we did do that, we voted for that, and then came back and voted to move forward with it after we heard some of the numbers. I've not heard anything, I mean, it was mine, I mean, it's obviously it was my idea to do it, I, I've heard nothing but good, I've not heard anybody say we shouldn't do it, but.
I'd like to make a motion that we wait on that a while. Think about the.
I'm on, I'm on second there.
Any discussion? Considering it deals with money, let's do a roll call vote. Considering it deals with money, let's do a roll call vote. Now, hold on a second, how long do you want this, let's, let's clarify this motion. Wait on it a while, or do you wanna just table this whole project until it's brought back forward?
Until what?
Till it's brought back forward. Which means.
Well, I mean, springtime will be here pretty soon. I mean, we're sitting here in February, I mean, do we decide it for March or April?
Costs can only go up though, they're not going down.
Well, you, you have to make the motion, I mean, for a while doesn't work. You're gonna have to make a specific motion to what we want to do. Do we wanna cancel the project? Okay. Okay, now re, reset, reset your motion to what you want done.
Like to make a motion, if, if, cancel it and not do it.
I'll second. With, with reservations.
Any discussion?
I, I don't, I don't love cancelings, I think, I think we can table it.
No, you can. You can motion, you can cancel the project. That's what you're saying, cancel the project. Now, I mean, if you don't vote to cancel it, then you can vote to table it till we wanna do it. I mean, we have, we have to go in steps.
Absolutely.
It technically is tabled right now until spring, but.
But the project is in motion.
Yeah.
We have permission to go forward. As soon as we can get the weather to put the fence up, we can put the fence up, as of right now. Councilman Gray's saying, no, we don't wanna put the fence up.
It's kinda just yes or no.
Yeah, we're not, we can't table it.
Yeah.
But he said for a while, then he has to table it and give it a timeframe.
I'm thinking we need to spend the money on something else instead of the fence.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Greg?
No.
Councilwoman Knapple's absent. Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Councilman Warren?
No.
And Vice Mayor Peters?
No.
Motion fails. Create a two.
Motion to dismiss?
Adjourn?
Hey, I'm gonna second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.